Mr. Schindler, please stand and join us in opening prayer. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we ask of your guidance as we make decisions for the county today. It would be to put together a budget that would make this county function run in a smooth manner, if that's possible. And we ask that you do with our troops, we're going to need an E M S with our family during all this traffic, this travel weekend, all of them. Your name is Craig.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to go through the budget. I guess in particular, see what everybody has, the presentations.
Can I read y'all something that you want to share with me?
Uh huh.
Okay. Um, I want to say, "I regret that I was unable to be in attendance at today's budget workshop. When originally posted, the workshop was scheduled for Thursday, June 28, 2013, at 1:30. With that knowledge, I scheduled an appointment for this afternoon. I notified Barbara O'Vai, who's on Monday, June 17, at 6:05 PM for the situation. I advised her of my availability this morning until 10:30 in the hope that the workshop might, the workshop time would be changed. Here are the workbooks with all the budget information that has been received today. Only new information will be provided after. It is imperative to bring your workbook to each workshop. I urge you to review these requests early and make notes for questions for each official slash department head. My understanding is the next workshop will be posted to follow Commissioner Spores meeting Friday, June 28, 2013. Early next week, I will provide a schedule for brief departmental presentations to support their requests. Serving the line as a pastor."
And obviously, I'm sorry, but EMS didn't come first. We had a post-it and it did change. And Tico inadvertently took it down by accident, it wasn't intentional. And after that happened, I had to move on to EMS and put up for me a large issue Friday afternoon last week. And obviously, we're important, so we're here with budget today. If everybody wants to go through here and just say what they presented, it'll give you guys, you need these worksheets, these worksheets to start, because you don't know what people can flex, that's what you have in your hand anyway. So, if anybody has anything that they actually want to present or ask for today, you know, and I was thinking about this yesterday as we were doing the, you guys weren't here, but we were doing all this, this budget stuff for EMS, and you see what a bond EMS is in. If you notice, I think this needs to really be looked at during budget season, because we were arguing about giving them pagers, we were willing to be protested and being threatened to, you know, turn into the Attorney General for supplying pages for emergency medical services. We denied it in the building, done all this stuff, and then we can't figure out why it falls apart. And all it says is going to tell you, these people need pagers and a building to run. So, we might want to look at all this stuff. We did post a special meeting for June 24 at 5:00 PM to be able to come back and be able to talk to these folks. I don't know where her is, has anybody seen her? But no, she was here for J.C. Portwood, uh, J. Stewart. Daisy, did you have Portwood this morning?
No, I did not.
No?
Here, Ellen.
Yeah, I'm good. So, I've lost her a long way. It's all right, he'll show up when he gets back, he's getting banned from the law at some point in time. So, that's just some of the problems that we're having right now, but are the biggest problems on our page. I guess Ronnie, you know, he might have some issues that he's addressing with Road and Bridge.
Oh, yes, I've got a degree, uh, from Michigan. There's some good things going on with Road and Bridge, and obviously, there's going to be a few stumbling blocks. As part of, as part of the budget process, in this current budget year and next budget year, anytime we can secure donated materials, that's the equivalent of any other budget. And in an effort to maintain an ongoing contribution of water that we use in our tanker for road work, and of material that has been donated in the past, I scheduled a meeting with the E O G at their Gillette office. We went out and met with Jason Gates and last night's shop, we got the person, great shop. Met with those, they're construction consultants for the E O G. They have given us fresh water that we're currently using out of the building in Gillette, the intersection of 119 and 80. We've used it all week this week, free of charge. They've also given us a large supply of reclaimed material. I'm in the process of going through the Railroad Commission, I've already gotten approval from the Railroad Commission to use that material. We're now going through a process with Furb and the court, the month that goes on the agenda for 28. The court's approval, if the material deemed to be clean, if there are no contaminants in it that we can use that material. In the process of that meeting, they requested, because they were developing six well sites and a production facility at the intersection of County Road 271 and 275, which I was hoping to have a large map, but couldn't get it printed, so we used this one. Right in this corner of the county, and it's both roads are county line roads. 271 comes out of DuWitt County at the Salt Creek Cemetery, if somebody knows where that is. 275 comes out of Gonzalez County, just a short distance off Highway 108. And both of those roads were one-lane roads, there's no way truck traffic could pass back and forth on those roads. E O G used their construction equipment and contractors and slated 275 and put rock on it at their expense, no cost to the county, from the county line to their location on They simply requested there were two culverts on that road that had holes in it, large holes in particular. They requested that we could shore that up, so their equipment can move back and forth, and we would have traffic coming out of Gonzalez County off of 108. And the road on 271 was overgrown, was rushed to the point that it was impossible for two trucks to make. It barely could get up and down it with one car. So, in exchange, I felt it was good business practices to get those roads opened up, I sent out a crew, a rush crew, to start at the county line on 271, and worked up to the location, and I sent one by-bill truck and one motor truck on 275 to fill in the two culverts that were collapsed, or they weren't collapsed, they were sunk, and required a fill to get them back up to par where the road would be in good shape. And as a result of that, we received some complaints that, just coincidentally, I'm married to a lady that owns an RV park in that neighborhood, and the complaints were that I was building a superhighway in the RV park. That is as far from the truth as you can possibly be. We got those roads up, had a request from E O G, we said, "Don't work on anyone's private property or for E O G." I think they're a good business partner, I want to do business with them, and I'm sorry that you had to take the key to the complaints, but that's the truth of us, where we are. That's why the work was done. Any questions about that?
No, I got called a few times as soon as I, then I spoke with you about it, and I, like I explained, I said, "I'm sure there's a legitimate explanation for that, why he could be on those roads." You explained basically exactly what you explained this time, but now that is, I mean, that is good business practice.
You're allowed to have a lot of things, that's cool.
Well, you know, I just want the court to be aware that I'm going to try to be as transparent as I can be, and the work's going to be done in accordance with the law, I'm not going to do anything that has any question attached to it without going through her first and then bringing it before the court. I will assure you of that. On actual budget issues, I've looked at line items in the budget, and we're running very short on materials, and a very large surplus in the bond money. So, I've made a very dedicated effort to get started on the bond construction roads. We're going to start Monday on 145, installing the necessary drainage, digging the ditches out, putting the pipes in, getting it ready to start laying rock. 220, I'm sorry, 326 was started before I came here, and about two-thirds of it was completed. That road, drainage and everything is prepared and ready, so we're going to start Monday morning, laying surface material on the remainder of that road before we hit 145, that car, so that we can start laying material on here. We went out and cleaned the bridge on 145 yesterday, and we're probably 75% through with that, there's still some work to be done there. But I'm going to try to be prudent in dealing with budget issues. We have to do some shifts in line items, the want and I've already discussed that, and we're going to do it within the standards. But at the same time, I'm aware, we've got a lot of work to do and a little time to do it on our bond issues. So, we're going to concentrate on those roads. James had a real good suggestion, he and I discussed roads in his precinct, and his prioritization is to use the road as first with the school traffic, it's the heaviest zone. I went by the administration office this morning, unaware that they're closed on Fridays and Sundays, they're closed, so they seem to talk to me. But I'm going to talk to the school, wherever their heaviest bus traffic is, if that will be your first route. I'm going to try to do one road in each precinct, and then the next. We've done two, one in one, and one in two, it's a trick, or, anyway, I'm having trouble with precincts.
One and four.
Four, right? Okay, one and four, so two and three will be names. Any comments or questions, anything specific about budget issues?
One on the parks and all the roads, I really think we need to make sure we get them concentrated in and put them in, because those guys are pressing those pipes.
I would really agree with Shelby, and that one thing that I'm going to focus on, is we're not going to hopscotch, we're not going to go in and hit a spot, and go somewhere else and hit a spot, and that's why that happened, that the job was not completed, it should have been.
Then, did you ever look at again, looking at dust suppression for some of these roads? It takes a while to get back to it?
I have, and there's, there's not a line item in the current year's budget for dust suppression, the toll funds and the bond money for dust suppression.
But the upcoming budget?
I'm definitely going to have a line item in there for that, and I've gone out and looked at a road where dust suppression material was applied, and I'm very impressed with those two things. It suppresses the dust, and it keeps the material out of the road and disintegrating the blind管. It's just a good investment.
I do have one, one comment that I haven't mentioned to you. On a lot of these roads, there's some 20-foot pipes, and there's no mortgage to go into that, and we're liable to someone running off that to the mortgage. So, we have him now asking you to spot those.
And those are the laws.
Well, it is, I mean, protect us from liability and protect the pipe and the suppression of trucks. Anything else? Y'all should have been easy on them.
Yeah, but you're just telling us that.
Yeah, it's a good explanation.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Ronnie, also, that guy from Art here?
Yes, and I will have that on the agenda Friday.
Okay, I need items, I need some things.
No, no, and I've got several that needs to be on the agenda. The permit, we're rewriting one of our permits, and that, and the three or four issues I'll discuss with you.
Okay. All right. I don't know if y'all want to go through any of these, if y'all want the workbooks to be able to study, if you're going to, I don't know much you want to do. Want to go through some of this, the press that are here? And I can, we can just, like, generalize and tell you why we're asking for stuff?
I don't want to go through it now and ask questions, but if just anyone wants to say something, I'd say what they want to do out there, because that would be a problem for me.
And later on, you want to schedule for the next one, so we can have.
People need the knowledge, they need the background, I mean, just coming in here and having everything done, it isn't five seconds, everybody expects us to, we can't swallow that fast. I do want to point out that we have the Veterans Services Officer have a budget in here this year.
They always have one.
Yeah, but they have increased highlights.
I don't know.
Because he doesn't have a computer, that computer belongs to a juvenile probation, it doesn't belong to us. I think it actually belongs to one of the school districts, and they will let us use it. So, that has been an increased line item on that, if you wonder why. And one of the other things that he just recently asked me for, and I'm going to ask you guys to make a note on your Veterans Services, is he has a, you know, but he just has, you see, uh, go down, go, it's right behind, it's right behind me, me and the county clerk, go behind the staple of the county clerk's, right there. If you go to Veterans Services, he also wants, he may, he can help us find it, he wants something, those Veterans pictures that he has, they're just, like, stuck to a bulletin board, we want to put some kind of glass, some kind of glass in the paint of the wall, just so the pictures don't get destroyed. And they just, they're starting to bend with time, they're trying to, we can borrow the fine, and so.
Like some press?
Yes, like a enclosed case, and so, if y'all want to add that to there, he did ask me to ask him for that, he's in there, he just has to do it, so I don't know what to do. Hey, do you think we could look at for this, just see what they can do, stay a couple, hang one of those enclosed cases in there, and be able to salvage those pictures for us?
Take that one?
Either that or on this wall, somewhere, just so they're showcased. I mean, some of those pictures are old, 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 when they start to, so I don't know how much that case can cost, but if you have to us.
You just tell me if you have a line.
I think that's.
That one, that one.
Line angles, thank you.
Well, he wants a glass case and I don't blame him, because just like the sheriff's office.
Well, then you could put a nice case.
Yeah, the left end, or whatever, yeah.
His office is also, it's raining in his office too. It was raining yesterday, like, as the condensation is building back to the back. I was going to talk to him about that too, yesterday, and all the people on the back of the desk, but I don't think we have rain in a wall, it was just everything was wet. And, no, sorry, that one, I'll show you where.
Make sure his office is.
I think, well, I don't know, I guess he is, I don't know, but it was all messed up. So, he did want a case, but preserve those Veterans Services.
Do you need the larger one? Or?
No, I don't know, I'm hoping we can, I mean, you can add it to it, but I don't know if you can. You can ask him. But in that, he wants to be able to, he also put together a bunch of picture frames, and try to take it to run, and show cases to all of us. Thank you.
But with that being said, I also want to go out there, because juvenile probation had a surplus, and I went over there, and we kind of have the attitude of, if there's still things in surplus that didn't sell, she allowed us to go ahead and, we can choose from there, like, to have as backup. So, I'm going to get some extra, hopefully, have some extra computers as backups, and we've got, like, filing cabinets and chairs, and et cetera, et cetera, that way.
That was the clearance surplus?
Mm-hmm. So, in juvenile probation, I talked to me about it.
Oh, juvenile clearance surplus.
Yes, so, I've got a list of things, and, I mean, I went through there, and I took the liberty of working with her. I've gotten some things for the Sheriff's Department, for the tax office, like, for special projects, I just have to go pick them up, but that's definitely something, I know, maybe y'all may not agree with it or not, but we're very frugal, we recycle a lot, so, if, if we can, I mean, that's a great option, I guess. There are just extra things that we're working with each other, and she allowed us to have, you know, as a backup, just, you never know, but we needed an extra filing cabinet, instead of buying it, we got one from her. You know, so, it's just something that we need to work together, you know, with the surplus and that stuff.
Wayne, what are y'all asking for, four cars or four pickups?
We're going to see vehicles until we've bought them out and see what they need are. We may go two and four.
Let's say you got, like, you got a four-door crew cab, then I'm looking over, like, I see four condos, so is that, like?
We call it a boat now.
Boat down.
Towselves vehicles for 40 positions to be replaced.
Also, we're going to have to get by the time I got back on page in the 28, I can't remember the number of the prison jar, 28, 29, Joe pulled up on Google from me yesterday. Those signs were stuck in the dump from the elementary school jam, the larger size elementary school jam, and from the parts in the house building, one being dumped out in our precinct jar, and one being dumped out of our office parking lot, both of them will exceed $50,000. Both of them will exceed $50,000.
Can I have a group of them?
Both of them, the one at our office parking has to be tested, and the one at the precinct jar, precinct jar, the used precinct jar, they demolished a couple of cars, so, and I tried to talk to Scott yesterday, but he's approved, so, him and I were missing each other, perception was not very good. So, I don't think I have a, if I'm able to execute a contract, I'm not going to be able to execute a contract, we don't have money from Road and Bridge to be able to do that. From my understanding, there was, on both contracts, there was a haul-off provision, there was payment notes, Harvey's here, we can talk about bond issues, we can talk about other kinds of issues. The county should be involved in either one of these, we don't have a contract, we don't want those people to be involved in it, we don't have a written, a better standing, we don't have anything, we don't have a agenda for the people on, we don't have anything, so we can put them through. And so, now we're going to have to charge the taxpayers once again, the new stuff that they've already been charged to. And that's going to have to come out of somewhere to see how that was done, or who did it, or why it was done. But anyway, they were both charged $50,000.
Is anybody doing outside work for anybody? Like, for one governing entity or another, that we're just doing it as a courtesy or something close? Talking with Michelle yesterday, and it, to me, is something we need to really look at close, is that evidently, and I didn't know this till yesterday, we are the, I guess you want to say, the fiscal agent for G O?
We're the past 30 years.
Okay, and the money, they, everything comes here to the county, and then the county turns around and makes sure everything is set right, and then they turn around and get their money. Why are we doing it for free?
We got a better rate on the beds, and so we get a jail for it for free.
Do you know how much money goes through?
Do I know how much money goes through? Yes, a lot of money goes through.
Like, $8 million, $1 million, and what percent we could use to collect from G O for, but 1% would make a lot of money to do?
It's, but it's not always that, that's not how the initial agreement was set up.
Well, we need to renegotiate.
Okay, well, we also have 30 beds out there, so, we go get a case, do you get it picked out of our 30 beds?
30 beds, I don't care if it's 10 beds. I think we need to look at that, because it's taking our staff's time away from our normal operation, I mean, it might be petty, but to me, it's, it's okay for a little bit, when you start getting stuff that they're not getting the correct information to our staff to do, that slows everything down for us, we need to look at that. I mean, I agree with you, probably a deal that was cut before, I don't know.
It was.
But we need to renegotiate that.
And, I mean, actually, we're, you know.
It's interlocal government.
It is.
G O, G O cannot contact the government, the government can contact, track the government. So, it's between the Marshals and ICE and the county.
That's right.
It's not between G O and the Marshals and ICE.
It's an interlocal agreement, in which they're providing us the beds.
And G O gives the county $10,000?
For scholarships.
Scholarship and courthouse restoration.
And courthouse restoration. Far away from $8 million.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's true, but I'm just saying.
But Shelby, when you say $8 million, too, let's not, I understand that the monetary figures, but sometimes, one of those bills, one bill will be $1 million, how much does it take us to do, go, "Okay, here Barbara, sign this $1 million bill and take it to one and the one to write a check?"
Yeah, but that's not all that it's taking.
How much?
I, Friday, I had other things to do, okay? Friday, Vai calls me, texts me, there was $8 million worth of money in the bank between the two facilities, okay? When the federal and the original one, okay, the federal one got $6 million plus, the other one got the difference, okay? I'm having to spend since Friday to Wednesday to try to reconcile all this thing, because, yeah, they get you to sign it, but then they're making revisions, which I went and had a meeting with the Warden also, which is what I explained to Shelby, because that takes a lot of my time, I have to deal with that since Friday. The bank was freaking out because they had to collateralize that money, so, we didn't know that they were going to send us, we made over 31 checks from Friday to Wednesday, okay? There was five amounts of over a million plus. And you're right, it's, you know, because what had happened was, they were having issues internally, and they weren't getting their monies. Well, meanwhile, then when I get it, you're right, it should be, Barbara sign it, here Michelle, give it to Hana, everything dried, let's go. I cut the check, buy receipts, you come pick it up. That's not what happened. I mean, Friday, I stayed until 7:30 working on that, because there was 26 of those. When you're looking at five different amounts of 1 million, you better make sure that those all tie to the penny, okay? So, that makes time, and he's not saying, I understand what he's saying, but when it takes that much of my time, I can't do the rest of my job and everything else that I didn't tell. Yes, maybe, I'm getting a little harsh, but you know what? What he's trying to say is, okay, we have this interlocal agreement, but why do we have to keep with the same contract? We need to look at our contracts and renegotiate and see. I mean, can we do the math? Can we look and see if the other facility is going to grow, what are we gaining from that facility too? If you took 1% off of the 6 million that the federal one got, that's $64,000, that I told Shelby, $64,000 is a good payment for some kind of improvements for the county. Yes, I think it's like a gentleman's agreement, it's great to have.
But wait a second, Sheriff, you need to come back, there's also, because what we ran into, we ran into this numerous times with G O, yes, it's a building issue, yes, it's an issue, yes, it's a status issue, but G O bids over backwards to the parts, at the parts county favors.
Oh, we're not saying that they're not.
We have 30 beds out there, psychiatric services, they're providing for us because of another interlocal agreement.
But don't we have to pay for some of that, though? And it's most of it, well, but it's most of it, because I went out there, and Sheriff
and I went out there prior to this, and then I went out there, well, I don't know if you went out there with me, but when I went back there with the Warden's agreement, we had a couple that were going, they had some mental challenges out there, and they covered for us, we had no work for them. Our sheriff had his deputy on the road, I think, how many days in a row, trying to get somebody in a facility, and they would send them and bring them back, send them and bring them back, send them and bring them back. So, I also had a deputy on the road for six days, and G O fixed it.
But that's the thing, okay, exactly what you're saying, look at what I'm dealing with, look at what they're dealing with, look at what you deal with.
No, no, but G O fixed it for us, they took, they took the sheriff off the road.
And that's great, but there's still a whole, there's a broader picture of what we're looking at.
Y'all have to set that out of part, before that jail is fixed.
Oh, we're not saying that.
Because that's all we're trying to do, then, when you guys run into these mental health issues, and you run into that stuff, and nobody else wants to fix it, and G O does us those favors, somebody else is going to put that band-aid on there, because it's been the sheriff and I.
Oh, we're, and we're not saying that we don't want favors, what we're saying, like I said before, that's a gentleman's agreement, you know, that's called people working together.
That's right.
This is what, this is what I was telling Shelby, though, but there is room, and why not indulge us of looking at those contracts? We need to be able to make sure that, you know what, we're responsible for that. Like, I even, when I went to the meeting, and I had it with the Warden, the business manager, because we've had so many issues going back and forth. You know, at the end of the day, it's either my initials or my boss's initials on that check. I don't know, but everything better die, because I'm not going to go to jail for nobody. So, they're making revisions, and this and that, we want to know why, and that takes time. And, you know, like I said, we're not trying to throw it out there and throw them under the bus and say that we're not willing to, you know, to work with them, we never said that, we're just saying, can we look at this? We don't even know where the original contract is, our office doesn't have a copy of it. I'm sure your office doesn't, we don't have.
She's got it filed.
We don't have it, we don't, we don't know. I mean, I'd like to look at it, so we could have it from your.
But what I do know is G O's extremely transparent, too, I have never had an issue with them trying to hide any revision.
Oh, and we're not saying that.
I've never, I mean, if y'all have that issue, that's something y'all need to work out.
We're not, no, that's not an implication that I made, that's not what I said. What I said was, this is taking time, and if it takes a lot of my time and another office's time, then we need to look at this and, let's see where we can tweak it. Are, are we getting the best money for our, for our vote, you know, best services for our vote, too? That's all I'm saying, because, you know what, I'm the person that's having.
I'm just saying, we need to look at that, it's something that we can do, we need to try to do, because we're starting, you know, time is money.
So, it's 30 beds, some of them are smaller than the nation's, so it's all, so it's all the medical field, but it's all the psychiatric field. So, you're going to have to pick and choose and fight those battles, but, we lose those beds, that was the only thing that saved us, that kept him open for the Texas Commissioner of Jail standards, as they stepped in and took care of him.
But it's not a battle, and that's not what we're saying.
It is, it is a battle.
No, it's not, it's not, no ma'am, that's not what he implied, that's not what I'm implying. What we're saying is just, we need to look at some things, let's look at our contracts, let's look at them every so many years. Why not? There's half new administration here, you know, why not look at it and get it clarified? That's it. Not saying we don't want to do business with them, not saying, you know, at all, it's just, there was some issues. Not saying we don't wanna do business with them, not saying, you know, at all, it's just, there was some issues.
I know they've been extremely transparent beyond that issue.
Well, and I know they are, I'm just making a comment that.
We're transparent, too.
I just want everybody to know that we're, that, that what we're doing here is, is starting to.
It's growing.
On the county, that maybe we need to figure out a way to streamline it, that's all I'm saying. I ain't saying stop doing it. I'm saying if there's a way we can, we can collect some time for people working on it, we'll maybe bill them back or something, I don't know. I never saw the contract, I've never seen the contract. What do you pay for a bed? How much?
Oh, from them?
Yeah.
Oh, we don't, not to them, for free.
For free, for how long?
It's been like that, a long time.
If you got a contract with them, so we don't.
There, there is a contract.
About seven more years.
There's a contract that we did, that's right. We were, it was when Kendall was here, I believe, on court orders, but it was a 10-year contract. We did that just when Kendall was judge. So there's a contract out there.
Was it Kendall or was it Pavelik?
No, it was Pavelik. Pavelik was the original one, we changed it.
When Kendall came in?
Pavelik was like in 2001, 2002 or something. Kendall was 2009.
I need like two, three more years left on it.
On which one? No, we have, we have a lot of years.
As soon as the 10-year.
Right, it was a 10-year contract, but not the one with Pavelik. What we did with, what I did with Pavelik, we changed it with Kendall whenever it came back to the table.
So it was first term, second term?
We changed, we changed it, right. I don't remember the exact information on that, I'm sorry.
No, no, we can pull, we can pull the.
I just remember 10, but I think it's seven more years.
Seven.
So I think.
I know when we're out there, we're in Texas, we should ask him, I would give that, we all would know all this contract.
Right.
And Warden, what is that, the guy's name, I can't see his, I can't, what was your Warden's name? I mean, was this his?
One there.
Yes. He was there, he did all that.
Who would have the contract?
Boyberry, you can't even talk to him. I'm sure it's in the minutes.
God, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we're saying, it's not for a big debate.
Just a question. No, that's fine, that's fine.
Exactly. This is the workshop, everybody, have questions.
We'll be back Monday, we'll give you MS. We have to figure out the budget, we have to figure out something, we're going up the bids, we're going up the contracts, we're looking at the statute or whatever it is we have to do. And Herb's gonna compare an MOU, acknowledge that on record, too, because I don't want that just floating around out there. And have you talked to citizens states here? I know you had court this morning inside Michigan, and I had a doctor in front, saying he's a state figure, so.
Do we hear anything on the, on the Obama period yet about the fourth time?
Tomorrow.
Well, they're saying, well, it's gonna be 29 now?
They're wrong.
Well, it's 30, you have to pay them full, full benefits. 29, I'm making a wrong. You already did it?
29.
Only the guys on mine with the citizens collection station may put up like 40,000, maybe like 40,000 for a pack holder, 30,000, 30,000, whatever I can get them for. Because the dumpsters that we're hauling in, they're, they're not. I wanna pack them down, we can double up the amount of trash we can get rid of. Because I'm taking my regular back holder, my company back holder, and I'm smashing as much as I can. I can't get to every single one, I just go over there whenever I have a chance. But if we have one there on location from the counties, we can get on it and just smash them. I can go over there with one that's fully packed, but two feet over, and I just get the back holder, and I smash it down, I make, I knock it down halfway. It'll, it'll pay for itself. I don't have that on there, so it's a piss. I figure maybe if we budget 40,000, I'll try to get one for less than that, maybe 25,000, 25,000 on the board.
James, while you're on that topic, I have another question related to that.
Sure.
How does the county schedule recycle days, like tires and those kinds of things? I know they've had them in the past where we were able to dispose of a large number of tires from both from the dump sites and the county, and we pick up on the roads. We're starting to collect a lot of tires, so I'm curious how we schedule recycle days to get a truck in here to take them.
Well, before, all we did was order in all those trucks, and we just got rid of all the tires.
Right.
Right now, we're on a sort of like a contract with Liberty, so as soon as we guesstimate that there's a.
The trailer?
Yeah, we call it. And there's probably a truck over there. But anytime, y'all need to get rid of disposed of those, just head on out there when it's open and couple them up.
We, we've already taken a couple of them out there, but those have to be recycled.
I'm sorry, Barney, what?
Well, I'm sorry, we, we've already taken a couple of them out there.
Yeah.
We picked up off the side of the road. But I'm aware that immediately we recycle, but that's why I was asking.
It just depends on, with the contract with the stakes, that whatever, we're, we have a truck, or two trucks there, and we call them, they come in and pick it up. We do the same across as we did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to increase the, 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 the issue of our roads? I know we talked about that right after budget, you think there's somebody dumping twenty tires out there?
I don't know what we have in line item now, but I can look at it, but we can increase.
We probably need to double that. So we just sent that mine, ACOG, ACOG came in and pulled us out of the mine, so we might want to. So we might need to double that budget to get Liberty to come to here and pick up more of these tires that are laying everywhere.
Now, we, we have a way to, literally, we hire, there's some guys there that we hire on the weekend, they take care of the county's basin, and they recharge it.
Maybe 1,800, 2,100?
A truck, it's expensive, but it gets done on a Saturday or during the week. On a Saturday mornings, we're able to load them, that's right, and they haul it off the following week. They just come and drop it off, drop us off the truck. Train them. Jesse, I'm gonna ask y'all if there's, the shredder truck that we have out, out there is falling apart. Y'all are gonna have to get one, or if y'all have an extra one out there that y'all are gonna get rid of and put it up the circle, he may be interested in it out there.
Okay, I'm with you.
I don't know if y'all do or y'all don't.
Right now, all, all, all the ones we have are new. But when we get to that point, I'll start to keep that in mind.
We're gonna be working this one as much as possible, but, you know, these things fall apart, it's old.
I'd also like to look into, maybe to add a project for IT, for some of their computer information, it's supposed to be doing that.
At all times.
Maybe look, we have, there are like computers, important computers coming in, and all that kind of stuff, we gotta get computer information system person on staff, they can be able to. That way you don't have to go, I mean, there's so many times we have to send out lots of weekend's emails, some of them go back to weekends, some come after this, because the virus information, any system updates. If we had a computer information system person that we put on, it'll be done automatically. On my budget for the 911 office, we did hit a better estimate on the plotter, on how much you can cost for a piece for.
On the what?
The plotter, it's our big map machine. Two that we're running right now are our major, in fact, we use the one computer that it looked up to, they're no good. When we estimated, at first, I think it said between 60, 100, 10,000 on there. We had the one repair last week, and I asked the guy who was repairing it, what was the better estimate? He said we could be looking at up to 15,000.
Orange.
To replace the. Where are you at for this?
She's been talking.
Towards the end. Do you have a plotter, do you have a post?
There's one in there that's the one we found, but that would only take us up, just barely above what we're at now.
I know you guys work with ACOG a lot, and we like maps, like, are y'all still sitting on?
Until they fill that position, we have no way to update that map.
See, but I'm wondering, is there any way we can get on with them? Can you buy a plotter that is compatible with theirs to be able to talk with them? It might be a bit more expensive, but with all these companies coming in, it might benefit us if you can communicate with them. If you get those plotters that can communicate, do you have a problem with that?
I don't know what you're talking about, but we can, we can.
Do you wanna ask, do you wanna ask those ACOG people if that's a possibility?
We can do that. It might be, if we're getting that tighter than what I'm getting up now, and we did say about the 25,000, we don't need the 25,000 plotter people talking about. That's a six-color plotter, and we don't have maps, and we're out of the way to photograph it.
Okay.
The plotter that we have, the plotter that we have now, that was, what is it, about 10 years old, 11 years old?
Old. It's the one, it was from the 90s.
And it originally started.
Twelve, 12.
Like when they were over there?
Yeah, it was originally over here, because when we just did the inning four, it still had.
And what's hard is like, too, if I, unless I'm wrong.
By grants or?
Yeah, they, they probably won't even be able to, like, some of those things, they can't have them serviced. If they need, like, the ancient stuff, it's getting hard, order some of those supplies, because, you know, they're ancient.
Yeah, when we, when we was working on ours last week, they said, good luck, you're making for that one. And Michelle had to order it.
Yeah, I remember those when they were over here.
Yeah, because they're, you know.
They're all.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, we try to surplus things and recycle, but.
Yeah, they're old, because when I called it, because the one repaired it was the newer one, and I told them, I said, it's dinosaur, and he goes, what's playing dinosaur? And when I told him what the machine it was, he laughed, so. That's not a good sign.
Yep.
That's all.
And then you're spending more money, you know, to fix this, and I think you might as well.
This last, this last.
If something is compatible, you know, that's what she's saying, you know.
That's it. And the other, the other thing that I do wanna do is if, I would like to ask Dr. Worland, why he's working on that salary survey study? If we can get a computer information system person person to be full-time, if we can be able to incorporate that IT person into that study?
We really do need that.
Yes, maybe.
Do you know when he's going to provide that information to us, or when he's going to come back the week before?
He said he was going to get it as soon as possible, Mr. Percy was working on it, and they have got some kind of diagram and some kind of specifications that they're working on. And he said as soon as he had a date, he would let me know that date, that they are, he said he will be way within the timeframe, that's what they told me. That they, that they will be, they will be gone August 5th through 9th. And they won't be back. So I actually, he told me it's gonna be August 5th, 9th, I was, second my vacation, I don't know.
So we'll have that information in time to?
He said we would, he promised me he would, they, he said he would. And the gentleman that works with him, they were gonna, they were gonna, they wanted to do like a tier system, and it was like, he was looking at like the counties that surrounded us, the counties that surrounded everybody else, but somewhere besides counties, I mean, they were extremely thorough. They were very, very thorough in their search process, and what they had done. I mean, they had done it from numerous other counties, so they kinda have their ideas down. I guess it's just a matter of when they get it ready, but he promised me, he says, I told Shelby, when we first talked to Shelby, that he would have it done in plenty of time for us to discuss it as a budget item.
And that will be in office?
Ma'am?
In office?
He said it'll be gone August 5th through 9th, that's what he told us. And, and I think our budget has to be filed by October 1st, is that right?
Well, no, I mean, you have to, like, to update blah, blah, blah.
I know, I know that, but I'm saying the actual filing date.
The filing, it's usually like.
He said he'd have it, he said, he said that he would probably, he said he probably had it ready, we got it done, but he wasn't gonna present it till he got back. Because he, he wanted to come present it, and so.
You have to advertise it, you have to, you have to, so.
When y'all gonna be pulled, Daisy?
August 5th, or whatever, last year.
Please.
When you get pulled?
August 5th, August 6th.
All, all the same time, so we're all leaving together. It's not a conspiracy, though, we're not going anywhere together.
No, we're not. We're not going on vacation, we're going.
Have fun.
But he's gonna submit that you said, like, so then we can, y'all can look at it for this much, for net, for this.
And he said he had talked to Shelby in depth about that whole procedure, and that Shelby was fine with everything that he had talked about, and he went over, he everything that he went over, Shelby, no. And that was pretty much it. He said he would have it in plenty of time. He said if he had questions, and he has been requesting information, I had Vi provide information, and I sent Launa what Vi sent, that he had to add to. Vi didn't have anymore to add to, so I sent it to the auditor's office. They've all been compiling information for him, sending information to him, and he asked for a phone number list, we sent all that to him, and said if he wanted to talk to y'all, he would call y'all. If he had questions, he would call y'all. And he's still getting job, because along with the survey, he's gonna have job descriptions, and, you know, tweaking and looking and going, and that, you know, he wanted to visit with people. So he's got a process cut out from him, how he goes about it, I don't know. I guess he's got a step, you know, that he follows. Yes, ma'am?
I had a meeting with FEMA in May, I think, and then talked to us about us getting an engineer to look over our development in the floodplain. And then Shelby had met with Sarah, and I got ahold of the main.
Oh, sweet. Yeah, or sorry.
I'm gonna be with an engineer next Friday, Shelby. He's coming over Friday afternoon, and he's going to hopefully quote us some prices. I don't know, we need a higher hand, how we, or we're gonna try to get like a yearly contract with him.
From Sarah?
No, actually, he does love playing the city of Kennedy River, and that's a company that they're using. And Sarah's price was $2,000 per case, per developer, that was too steep. So I gave this guy, when I talked to him, said he would do like an hourly rate. So it's probably something that maybe we can add on to the development fee, to the developer paying for it instead of the county. So.
Just do us a favor, if you plan on signing the contract or accepting something, please make sure you come to us, so we'll know what's up.
I mean, Friday, and I'm hoping Shelby will be.
Because I, I keep hearing about these contracts, they're non-existent.
Well, we're not saying they're not, we're just saying, but we need to make sure.
Oh, no, no, not yours, these are other ones. I'm talking about like the Walker's Crossing Road, that one-page contract that's two paragraphs. Looks a little shady to me, but.
We can have it, and it's in the minute, I mean, I know.
As long as we have it, so we know, we'll be able to pass it through any, and I'm finding a bunch of stuff, or implement stuff signed for you, that there's contracts that were signed, they're not signed by any member of the court, so I don't know if anybody has those. Launa was questioning me about some prices, some interest costs.
Because when the outside auditors come in, they wanna look at all that.
Well, there was a contract signed, because RDO sent me the contract, and it was not signed by a member of the court. And that appears to be one of the problems, is how can I explain to Launa why that price agreed, because she kept asking me, I could know. So I asked RDO, and I found out that it was signed by somebody else.
Okay, and they'll be here Friday. I mean, obviously, we can't, we'll go fix it, but we can fix it in the future.
And we have to get something for surplus.
Right.
And I think there was also a.
There was several things left on there.
And so anyway, I mean, we can't, we just gotta keep going and keep going forward, but if you're gonna sign contracts, people, please let us know. Because if you don't let us know, and then somebody tells me I have a contract, and I'm telling you that we don't have one, and then it becomes a payment issue, and they say that the county agreed to extend the payment amount, and then Launa's getting a bill, and we don't have a contract, by law, we don't have to pay. And we're trying to play nice, because we don't wanna lose vendors, and we don't wanna lose people, and we don't wanna get a bad reputation, but in retrospect, you're making us look like we're just throwing money out, you know, in the wind, so let's, let's do this as smooth as possible.
And also, a lot of things that we need to consider, we're putting in a, I wanna say, a code enforcement person to go to review the subdivision things. I know there's a bunch of trailer parks that, and some of these mancans are here are not in full compliance. They, after they, they initially may work, but they've had it on. And I've seen ones, look, they have 14, it's got like 30 right now. And there's some other ones that are like it, too. But we need probably get a code enforcement person to start double checking on some of these. And if they are out of compliance, we need to get them in compliance and, and, you know, address that with this thing, so we can get out of them.
So we're looking at computer information and code enforcement. Would you write those down for Launa? Yeah, I know you're taking it.
Like an IT person, right?
Yes, an IT person.
And code enforcement.
And code enforcement.
Like for the.
You guys definitely administrator in there. And so, let's look at that part first, because he does have that included. I mean, you can comment since, so it should be happy, and EMS, and EMS has good papers, you know.
But don't they have some of them, or do we do any of them?
Well.
You know what, some of these bad wrecks, some of this stuff happened on one of those pages, I know, I know a couple of those pages.
Yeah, but, but they, some have worn out.
Oh.
Some have, some were damaged in a wreck or something, or something, and they have fallen or something, and then you have more people come in, and you don't have nothing for them.
I remember we did have some, like.
I mean, I know y'all never believe this, I'm tied, and I don't pay for insurance on my phone, and I broke it like two months after I had it. That insurance would then cheaply carry to me.
Now, yeah, now.
But I have a good budget for it, you know, with a brand-new eye on it, so $487 later.
Yep.
James, the way James has come back in, there's one other issue, and I don't know how the court wants me to incorporate this into the budget, it's a direction. The 1747, which, we're all aware of 1747 and the applications. It's a direction. The 1747, which, we're all aware of 1747 and applications. And I met with Nate Smith, engineering firm, last Wednesday. And we started the initial process prioritizing roads. And I'm going back over and double checking our list to make sure the list we have is not duplicating roads that are on the bond issues. We'll, we'll make sure that's taken care of.
And if you need to redo that bond issue, wait a second. If you need to redo that.
We can.
You can do that.
Right, but, but right now, the initial phase, just let's make sure we're not duplicating. And then we may want to. If one of those roads turns out to be a very high priority road and it's on the bond, then we may want to substitute another road for you. We could do that. But the real question, the real issue that he and I dealt with is the cash match. When, when we started looking at figures, breaking down figures, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $11 million departments counting.
We hope.
We hope. I mean, best, best-case scenario, 11, 11.5 million. That brings up the issue of two, two things. One, that we're considered an economically disadvantaged county. And I know prior to the whole, we were.
We fall into economic disadvantage category.
We fall into that category. Our cash match is only 10%.
We have already been.
You've already.
We have established that first time is in that.
Okay, so that, that answers that question. Still, 10% of 11.5 million dollars is my entire budget. So, you know, we need to think about that. We need, and that's, I know that's a very, very big topic for everyone.
Well, I would think that we would anticipate a 10% match in the budget if we were to give that, but that'd be over a biennium.
Okay, you have to, you have to do your regular budget. And we have to put a match in there for 17 or 18.
Does that need to be a separate budget?
It has to be separate.
Okay.
And also, you have to wait until the TERS implementation takes place. And because the TERS board will be formed. And just because there's a quote out there, this is why I don't like to throw up those numbers, does not guarantee us those numbers. We've already been told that, that that's not a guarantee. It's a possible maybe. And there's also, there's another bill out there that was signed last week in special session. Ours was signed, actually, Joe, you asked me, it was signed on the 16th through 17th. I got an email from Steve O'Callaghan, it has been signed, so yes, it is ours. But there is another one that was passed. It was passed under public transportation. And that one, it was highways and the county, we may be able to use some of that money also. Is the goal, is the hope, may not. But remember, when you say energy-dependent counties, like 225 energy-dependent counties in Texas, when you say shell play, West Texas just got a shell play. So they're also qualified now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So they qualify.
I'm sorry, I may have, like, shouldn't have been throwing numbers out. I was just repeating the numbers she gave me.
That was, that was a prayer. And then we found out when, like Big Springs has been down here, they've been roaming around down here in West Texas doing the shell play. And we ran into a few of those folks roaming around town, but they're out there just looking to see what's happened to our roads, what's happened to our highways. And they're trying to come in and talk to all of us and figure out what to do to make it better. And with Senate Bill 1747 being like it is, it's not retroactive. It's futuristic. So they're all eligible for the funds that we all went and fought for. So this is the first time ever county roads have ever been funded by the legislature. You know, the rest is called in our own history, so we'll see how that comes down. There was 225 energy-dependent counties in Texas. If you're just looking at the shell plays, you're gonna be able to knock that number down. If you're looking at wind farms, if you're looking at electric electricity, something like that, those are also energy-dependent counties. It depends on how Texas.
Yes. I, I understand the rules have to be adopted.
That's right. And I think it's gonna go on to a government in November. So we'll look at it.
Ronnie, you're gonna have to look at also in your budget, contract labor.
Yes.
You know, we need.
We, I don't, we're definitely gonna have to have a line out of contract labor. If no other reason than the bond.
And also, the, you know, the couple of roads we need to put back paved like they were are better than what they were before they got lifted up. As it showed, and they had one 27 and also, we need to fix it on 39s.
And each one of those projects is gonna be over $50,000. It must be bid separately.
I understand. I'm working with Herb, I'm working with LaWanna. Those bids will be put together and they will be done correctly.
We just have to put those to advertise on paper, that's it.
James, I apologize. One issue I brought up while you were out is 1747, just to get the court thinking about it. It's law now, it's been passed. You know, we, we still don't know what the rules are, what the formulas are gonna be. We have to provide a cash match. And that was the reason I brought it up.
We did get the definition category. Actually, though, we couldn't get the definition category, we were not. Too much fretting about that. He said, "I can always fight my husband." Relax, you were a comfort, but you made it. So, good. And actually, there is going to be some people on staff to help us develop that TERS. The first TERS meeting, I do believe, takes place. Texas dot's gonna meet the 26th, then we might all meet the 27th. We're not sure yet. But, and you want to go to those meetings with me?
Just make sure I have that.
I would love to have you.
I noticed that a lot of elected officials, some reason others have cell phone expense, except. Call 147. I noticed that the treasurer's got cell phone, the auditor's.
Everybody had that last year. They adopted it. Everybody.
$100 a month last.
Last fiscal year.
What month was it about?
We're tax on it.
It went into fifth on November.
October 1st for this fiscal year.
$100 a month. What you getting your check?
No, because we're taxed on it already.
Yeah.
So it's not $100.
What?
I'm saying we're taxed on it, so it's not $100.
Before tax, it's $100.
I'm just asking, I, I don't know if there was something.
Your brother?
You know, last year.
So anyway, I guess, are you asking, well, I mean, I think something that we need to look at.
That was in the budget before.
Are y'all gonna, I mean, that'd be, the question is, is something you're gonna want to do for next, for this incoming year?
That might be something we want to look at. I know that there was, Rose was saying, you know, I mean, some of the road bridge people that are on call nights and weekends, are they using their own phones?
Yes, in my department, I'm the only one that uses a phone.
Me too. I use mine. I work with the sheriff's department. I work with everybody who uses my cell phone.
You know, you're doing it nights and weekends?
I do when it.
I mean, if everybody's. If everybody's, I mean, that, that, that's gonna, you know, alleviate a concern. And if we're, we're gonna, that might, that might require some caution, yes.
I'm just asking, because, you know, just so everybody's on the same page. Because I didn't know, although I've seen it, but I thought maybe it's just just going here, or just always been a customary thing.
Well, I know, you know, the fine was on call.
You just saw it last year.
Doctor's wife, you know, he, he did ask for all.
Why do you talk to that? I don't remember.
That's from the, you know, friends and everything else.
Why do y'all do that? This is, this pastor, I don't remember.
What?
Why do we do the cell phone this year?
Because there was a question about, we were using our personal funds and if.
We were using them, we're not paid for, right?
The judge is the one that basically.
Said to do that.
Using our personal funds.
She said it would be better to do that. And then the court voted on it and everything.
The JPs, the road guides, the constable sheriff, everybody was going out that night. There became an issue of people wanting people's cell phones and cell phone records and yada, 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 yada. And were you using personal equipment? Were you using work equipment for personal time? And of course, if anything else, it became an issue of, you know, us doing something illegal. You've noticed none of us have ever been picked up, right? So it was one of those questions about, you know, it raised a steam of somebody wanting somebody else's cell phone. That's actually how it started. Somebody wanting to view somebody else's cell phone records. And, and then it became, well, they're not paying me to view my cell phone records. You're not gonna view my cell phone records. Well, if we pay, will you view your cell phone records? Folks, Orange County hasn't anything.
I'll leave you get over it.
Once you get picked up, if we see somebody in the back of the bar and hold on, until then, everything's fine. Nobody's gonna think wrong. And that's all it was, is somebody who's trying to start a steam over somebody else's cell phone. So we got an opinion from Ross. I've shared that opinion with Herb. And what it is, you can do it. You can do these kind of things. And nobody's gonna be joking. You're fine.
The highway patrol thing, extra, the gas here as well as license plate, boys, the scale.
Tell me again, the highway patrol office is right here. What about it? We, that's our license plate.
But it says site refrigerator, waste station, which.
Oh, because they need one out there to keep their drinks and stuff cold.
Okay, but I mean, but do they have, does that waste station have its own budget, if you want to ask?
No. Okay, that was something that, I think one of the troopers had brought up or something. Because this year, like in the current year that we're doing it, we didn't have it up yet, you know, so I think it was just all adopted through DPS. So that's definitely gonna have to be increased because you're clearly seeing, I mean, just to get the thing up and running. And, you know, there's costs that you just don't expect. And so it possibly would be a good thing to have it on itself.
The sergeant this year, I've been talking to him, the sergeant was, he's the one that made that presentation. I think somebody asked.
I had money in there for a waste station, for construction. Okay. We needed a computer. We still have money left. We bought a computer out of construction money. That's what we did. We still have a little money left. There's still some things that I have to do. I found out that we're gonna have to have the scale calibrated twice a year. So I gave LaWanna, I figured, $3,500 that we need in there just for general maintenance of the.
Or we could, instead of creating a whole nother department for it, just keep it in that one and just add separate line items, you know. Because we've always had a budget for the DPS.
I, I understand that. But I'm saying now that we have another little thing by itself, do we need a budget by itself? Or do we combine it all together into one thing?
For me personally, I have to enter, you're combining there. We just break them down.
I think what happened, remember, DPS has always had a budget. And if we restart the waste station budget, and the DPS guy is probably including that in their budget this year, because we give them these worksheets. The worksheets are actually wish lists and they want something to keep their drinks cold.
Well, and, and then too, like I said, you started off, like, you know, as you're going along, like Pete said, you know, they did a rough estimate. Now we can actually see where we're at. They're having to buy the thing. And this network, like everybody else will agree. We've grown to such a mass quantity now that, you know, so we're just, we're just going along. We're trying to go along. But yeah, definitely, this year we're gonna have to.
Well, and we took that to McMullen County, and they had just started theirs. And so what we did is we kind of did a copycat here, remember? And so everything in McMullen County we did, we did. And then Pete went and added to it. Because we could have covered shed overall. I don't know if they ever did that or not. Did McMullen County ever do that, y'all? Did they do? And I mean, but at first, we didn't, remember, we didn't anticipate doing a lot of that stuff. We just wanted to get it up and running to try to get some money back for the lightweight trucks.
And they're very good, you know, the troopers in the legislature are good about working with us, you know. And they respect, you know, the chain of command. They always come and ask, you know, would this be out of the ordinary, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, it's hard to budget something like, another factor that some of the offices have said, what about like sheriff's office, for instance? Like when they have to, they used to have to go and wait, right? You go to the farmer's co-op or whatever. That was something that wasn't, I mean, we get used to it. Now we're having to do it. When they're having to send off things to test, right, which I told the sheriff, include that in your budget. I mean, there's so many different items that have grown overnight so much that we didn't have to do before. We have to do it now. So back to that, just add.
Sexual assault cases that we have to send off, that's also.
Yeah.
Have you, Dwayne, have you, y'all signed agreement with DPS to use that scale?
We, we have the, we have, I got one scale, but we haven't, we haven't signed a contract.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
I gotta keep.
Well, but, but do we have an agreement to you? I know it's ours, but there was something about.
Shelly. Okay. Russell came to me and said, "Can we have key to waste station?" I said, "I'll ask DPS." I talked to DPS. They said, "If the launch can, you can do with what you want to." I said, "Okay." I gave Russell two keys or whatever.
Are we using that scale?
Sir.
Are we using the scale?
Yeah, we're using it.
Right, right now, this place not working.
We take our candy there, the guy, part like $3, but.
Which I can tell, that's money coming out of their budget, so.
He'd be free to use it.
Let me ask you, I see, I seen him. I don't, I don't know if you put this in here or not, but, okay, you've got a license and wait deputy now. Okay, Z included in your regular deputies?
Yes.
Then you see, I hear another one that seek license and wait deputy again?
No, but Z, okay, the.
Was that going for another one?
No, that should have been, that was originally done. And then they took it away this year, right? And now they reinstated that. So that's already in there, so we can use that.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, is that, is that where you're gonna?
Right, because then that, because we already have that fine item.
Is that where you're gonna put them in with, I mean, the one that's there now? Yeah, I know. And same thing with the narcotics officer?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know if you were gonna try to get another license and wait, what we get in our budget.
But that's exactly what I'm saying, what the troopers have said. We can just add to it instead of creating more departments. Because it's still DPS.
Yeah.
You know, we just have the office here and then we can add to whatever else they need. They give us our descriptions. I'll create them. I don't have to create more departments. I'm great. Awesome. Great. You make me happy.
I said, we need copes. All right, you know what I had in there for full-time maintenance? We include maintenance supervisors, maintenance and code compliance. Is code compliance gonna be that demanding with full-time job?
I don't know.
You know, we do need a full-time maintenance personnel. You know, it's just.
I see where you're going, P.
I mean, we have Rose and we have, I mean, we're expecting two people to physically clean all these buildings all the time. The bathrooms all the time. Everybody's messing, do everything, mow the doors. That's a lot of work.
Well, we need, we need to be able to find them. We need to know, worst-case scenario, like when we had the toilets overflowed or whatever. And I'm one to say, James is my witness, don't I call you how many times, James, right?
Well, we know where Rose is at.
Yeah. We don't know where.
Rose is always seen.
You know.
I will tell you this, I asked Joe, I said, "Is the county paying for your cell phone? Would you give your cell phone number?" And he said, "Yes." Or you shaking your head?
I'm just saying, I don't know that that's the answer. What I'm saying, my question is, we need to know how, how to find you. And I'm not, it's not that I'm picking on him. I'm just saying, if you hire somebody else or whoever you hire, you need to be able to know, have a plan in force where, you know, like a fall tree, how are you gonna find this person in case of emergency? So then he doesn't feel either like, well, because then when he, I'm saying, I'm speaking for our building, because then when we look for him and somebody tells him something in a rude manner or whatever, then he sometimes gets upset with us. It's like, hey, I don't know. All I know is this toilet's going into my office. Can you help me clean this? You know, that's all, that's the example I need.
To me, like, like cutting this yard, you know, I, I've been talking with the probation office about their probation. You know, and then she's telling me that she's got a lot of probationers that want to do community service, but there's nobody to, to look at and to watch them. And if you need, if you need, we had a, a one-weekend or two-day-a-week person to oversee, to watch the probationers, make sure to leave, not them out and do something, a retired person or something like that. You could have one person, actually, probation crew come out here, cut the yard, edge the whole nine yards, they're working their community service time off. And then that leaves another person strictly doing detailed cleaning, or, or maybe use one of those people to do a little detailed cleaning in the hall or whatever. I don't know. So there's ways to do this if you.
Well, regarding maintenance, I agree, there needs, there must need to be another person because we get back into a minimum of one time a week, maximum, I'm sorry. It, it's not even once a week. And that's all we get is back in, kind of Rose is busy going between the annex and here and back. And maybe, an idea would be to have one person assign to one building and one to another. Because when they're going back and forth, they're being pulled in 20 different directions by 20 different people. And it doesn't, it's not working.
And we also actually have a responsibility to keep that juvenile probation building clean all day. Because there would be a lot of times if the kids don't come in at night, or the kids aren't working late or whatever, sometimes that building will go three or four weeks without being cleaned. And when we were over there, we did our own sweeping and mopping. Tito did our sweeping and mopping. We did it ourselves because the juveniles weren't available. And so we probably need to hire somebody that we know that is coming between these three buildings all day long.
I mean, we had talked about, I know, I don't know how everybody feels, not putting anybody out, but privatizing. We got quotes years ago, you know, to do strictly, this is what you want them to do. Because I know Joe had an issue with, he got a seat with kind of her. He said, "Well, certain people don't want me to have a key," you know. You know, I can understand that. I'm not throwing him under the bus. I'm just saying, I see his point and then he needs to come get paper from me to go take to Carol or to whoever or this and that. And then, but yet, somebody's looking for him. So then, you know, he comes to me and he's upset. Hey, I understand. I know how that feels. All we're saying is, I think everybody would agree, let's say if it was privatized, you'd have this farm doing this exactly. And if you have Joe and if you have Rose, then you can, you know, you can set up a schedule and say, this is blah, blah, blah. But then they're not gonna have to do this over here that this private company is gonna do specifically for us. You know, and then you have. You know, and then you have, I mean, you should be accountable for everybody, but